It's the worst case, they'll be able to see you guys.
So when they talk, are they coming through that computer then?
Yes.
Yeah. That's true.
Can you guys hear us okay?
Yeah, it looks like it's broken.
Yes.
What do you need, like a USB?
It's a mini HDMI.
Can anyone on the Zoom meeting hear us?
It's the mini.
I can hear you, this is Andy.
I can hear you too.
Because it's.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have an extra laptop upstairs that I can bring down if you can log into that one. And then maybe hook that up.
Let's try this again, can someone confirm that they can hear us?
Andy can hear you.
Rod can hear you.
Andy, it looks like you can hear us, we can't hear you guys, give us just a minute here, we're having some problems.
Gremlins. I think it's gremlins.
I think I'm here finally.
Let me go see what I had a connector piece for.
Hello? What's happening?
For everybody on Zoom, we're having some trouble, we're not able to hear you guys yet, we're still trying to work it out. I think Travis is gonna go ahead and start the meeting.
So I've got 9:10, I'm gonna call, we were.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call.
Mokler. Packard, I see you on the Zoom meeting. Smith, here, Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Need the approval of the agenda?
So move.
Second.
A motion of the second, any further discussion? Bring in all those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion of the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard that? Here. Drew does have a. The agenda item, the appeal, the CEP decision, there was a pair of notice. And. We're gonna, my recommendation for the board would be table that item.
They're not hearing us now.
Have them send our point be sent out.
We can live with that.
We'll save it, we get the people who are here to hear. You don't expect to be heard, yeah, no.
So it'll be on the ninth, it's what, like nine o'clock again?
The minutes here, so I was trying to get them so they could hear you guys on the. On the Zoom, so nothing for the official use permit appeal today.
Can you hear me? Could you hear me?
Okay, we should be, should be up now.
Alright.
I'm just gonna close out of this little message window.
Yeah, keep that running, because that is your control for everything. This is me, Lonnie.
Okay, so if I just X out of this box, you don't want anything on?
Correct.
Can you hear us now, Phyllis? Phyllis, can you hear us?
Hi Phyllis, we can see you now.
Okay. I left my phone in another. In another room.
We can hear you okay now too, so I think we're okay.
Okay.
Lane is there waiting, Phyllis is picture.
Yeah.
So you can hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
I can't hear you. Except by phone.
I got a. Problem with the mic over here.
Well, that's because they're not running through there.
We're trying to get it fixed, Phyllis.
I'm only hearing you by phone, I was not hearing you by computer.
Yeah.
I can just leave my connection open for you here.
Okay, that doesn't leave it open for anybody else.
Thank you, put your phone on speaker.
Got it? There was, there was also a note from. I'm getting terrible echo.
I can hear Phyllis and the commissioners, this is Steve Waller.
So Tom Phyllis is on, but.
Steve Waller was not getting anything either.
He said he is now. He can hear us and you.
Check. Disappeared.
Yeah, this is. This is Rod, I can hear everybody, including Phyllis.
Yeah, Phyllis, you might check and see if your speakers on, turn it up.
I can hear Phyllis.
Can you hear us now, Phyllis? Here we go.
Now it's disconnected me from Dick.
Yeah, okay.
I put on a mask and come in. That doesn't help anyone else.
Well, everybody else can hear us, Phyllis.
Hello?
Yeah, that's just me, Phyllis.
Hello?
Hi, Phyllis.
What's going on?
Is there volume, can you check to see if your volume is turned up on your computer?
Say what?
Can you check to see if your volume is turned up on your computer? The audio volume.
No, it was pretty far up.
Okay, I'm all out in your ears.
The what?
Can you hear Travis? Can you hear me through the computer yet?
Through the phone, I can.
That wasn't what we can do, we're not getting feedback now anyway. No, because everybody else can hear us, Phyllis.
I don't know.
No, they can't.
Steve Waller said he was not connecting. And I'm getting feedback. My voice echoes. Every time I say anything.
She can only hear you, Dick, so you gotta tell her that everybody is.
Pardon me? You have to tell her that.
You have to tell her that everybody else can hear, because she can't hear Travis.
Phyllis, everyone else can hear through the computer system.
Okay.
That's yours. And.
I'll put on a mask and come over, I'll just be late. There's something goofy here, then. See you in a few minutes. Carry on. This is ridiculous.
Okay. But she did it to be him. I would shoot. Phyllis, I bet it's where. We're gonna start with Rod. We got the right way application from long lines.
Yes, everything looked good there, I recommend you approve them.
Don't move. Check. A motion of the second, any further discussion? Hearing the vocal, or all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those same sign, motion passes. Right away application for Sandy Strong on 304.
Yeah, that's in, that's in with that ditch cleaning that we. Approved for Leighton. Scrum on there, and they need, they gotta take that driveway out. To meet the elevations, they wanted it wider, so. I recommend you approve that also.
A motion of the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, motion passes. Bridge closure. Bridges.
Yeah, we got a. Email from Johnson Engineering to close. The bridge on. 313th Street, it would be. East of the curve. We called the old branch on that curve, it's the River Bridge. Oh, it's about at three quarters east of where University turns back to the north. So, we had to close that due to the abutment, Johnson Engineer. Recommendation. So we closed that a couple weeks ago, and. We haven't closed the other one yet, just because I wanted to bring it up today, that. That Wasslin Bridge of month ago, we closed because we didn't think three ton. Was good enough, you know, we were supposed to drop it from five. To three, and we kind of all agreed that that bridge should be closed. The one up here on 300 and. Third Street. Would be on the river bottom south of Mike Hemmings, they want us to drop it to two ton. And I think if we're gonna, you know. We need to stay the same on everything, so. I would recommend that we close that too, but I didn't want to do it till the board. Heard what I had to say, but. That's also over the Vermillion River. If anybody's not familiar with this, half mile south of, or a mile south of the 302. Along Norwegian Avenue into the east. 303 kind of runs a little. For a mile and a half in there. So I would recommend that we close that also, I. Just wanted to clear it with you guys before we did it.
It needs to be closed.
Okay, I recommend, I would, three recommendations.
That's pretty much a local traffic, it only went anyway up there by my system.
Yes, I mean, two tons can be a walking bridge.
Yeah.
Second. A motion of the second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, motion passes. Possible budget supplement, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm. Couple of my lines are way over and we're not, haven't got all our. Paid my, yet my bottom line's still hanging in there, but. I'm, I think we're gonna make it, but we had paid that. 2020 Aztec. Microservicing bill in January, which took out about 850,000 out of my. Line, so just wanted to let you know. I'm pretty close, I think we're gonna be good till the end of the year, but. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. That that's the reason why. And I was gonna talk to Carrie. About it, and I'm fighting the infection in a. Toe, so I haven't been in yesterday or today to talk to, or other words. But I just wanted to bring that up, so.
Yeah. Anything else, Rod?
Other than that, no, that should be it, do I? Need to stick around, I see you have Myron Grove on. 454th Street on later.
Um, I don't think so. It was, I can just give you a quick update, they're having a meeting tonight. The township is, to discuss that.
Okay. So. I mean, nothing else, you haven't heard anything else, like, no change in that construction date?
No, I haven't heard anything.
Okay, supposedly 23, so, okay. Alright, then I got, we have a. Transportation study meeting this afternoon, so. I'll be in the office by then for that meeting, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Drew, are you coming down, or?
Yeah, he's not on, so.
So the appeal of the P and Z decision on the CUP application, the private recreation area. Is going to be tabled and moved to November 9th, because there was a publication error. So I'll be November 9th at nine o'clock. Label will wait for Drew, your quarterly report. Yeah, I believe Carrie sent it out a week or so ago, just need it approved. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Looks pretty thorough. And that's not even the month.
Short bit of.
Wow. Do you want to log here?
Was it? I'm good, but do we need to prove this?
Yeah. An emotion.
I'd be a motion to approve the quarterly report.
Second that. A motion of the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Start with the medical cannabis. Discuss altering. Medical cannabis license to allow for. One. Probably. And to change. Yeah, you also change the body versus. We could do that, but there's other portions in that license that would have to change. In the licensing ordinance. That would have to be changed. Biggest one in there was zoning guidelines. My hope was to come to you guys today and say. We got changes made in. Comprehensive plan. And medical marijuana zoning ordinance, cruise of playing zoning fishing. And one other change. To allow for those changes. There's been a small hole. So right now, even if we change a license. It would only be allowed on the major highway courts. And we have, don't have zoning set up. For it anyway. Also, come Friday or Monday, the state's gonna put out. Rules on what. Business regulations are gonna be for medical cannabis. And figure out a solution for these problems yet. We'll have some things ready for you guys next. I thought we have, that we have the ordinance part ready. Uh. That's what I have right now.
So what is it in the ordinance precisely that has to change?
What I'm trying to change is allowing some kind of commercial operations. Out in the regular county. And right now. Very basic interpretation is on commercial industries. Trying to expand that out, and we're still trying to figure out the criteria for that. And we've got three things right now, planning, zoning, they're all kind of tied together, medical marijuana, comprehensive. Camp ground ordinance, language, that also covers commercial districts, they're all tied together, they're all working as one. Plus we're. As in the campground ordinance part is the language about allowing. What criteria you'll need for commercial uses along the county roads.
So what's the tie between growing medical marijuana and a campground?
I'm ready to use zoning. All those, add all those looped in, just one chain move forward, it's just that criteria. Commercial uses along the county roads.
And there's no way to separate that?
No, it's one, one piece right now. And then the big whole look is that criteria. What we're trying to work on, so. Say anything else with a better plan on that. Want to report on that, I've got that one, but some of other.
So it's, but when you get the information from the state. That could have an effect on these too?
Yes, yeah, on that license.
So.
To a point. To me, it's the commercial, that's holding something, yeah. I mean, if we can give them the direction you want, do we allow the commercial along? And I would just limit it to pay growths. Yeah. Eight hundred, yeah. I mean, is that? I think that's the whole, yeah. So we just allow commercial along, pay to show the roads.
And he did address that last night, I assume, we saw the chat.
Yeah. But it didn't get addressed. I mean, there was no definitive decision. No, no. But we can give them the direction if we want.
So what's the sense of the planning and zoning?
My sense was to allow it along the county roads. But we weren't getting pushback. But we weren't getting pushback. The session on two meetings, I spent what? Yeah, uh, yeah, I don't know how to work criteria. We've got a lot of building size. Commercial building size. Not a, it was the size, not a size, but just. Majority of planning was. Didn't think there should be a size on the. On the bill. Because we have, I mean, ten thousand was proposed. Ten thousand square feet for the building itself. Yes, we're already looking at buildings that are already built. That way now. And they're not very big. Yeah, once you get in there and get equipped in there. They're not very big buildings.
Right.
They seem big, but they're not. The average commercial building size is like half a thousand, fifteen thousand square. I, I, when I did the, I went around to the average, I dropped that and I worried that all. This has been the second. Yeah, I think the more wanted a more. Sophisticated to just use your building size. And it's some, some language. And the, the biggest problem that we're having was. If we put ten thousand in there, what if a company comes in and says, well, I want a ten, eleven, or twelve thousand square foot building? We can't allow. We have to say no. So we're sitting there going, how do we? Decide what size building somebody should have? We have no idea what we're gonna, could possibly be doing. And building size doesn't necessarily correlate with what. Somebody doesn't want in the county. I mean, you could put a. You could put something nobody wants in a two thousand square foot building. What's, what's the difference if it's twenty thousand and it's something we want?
Sounds to me like the zoning. Needs to still work on this. I don't know if we can get direction that's gonna really help with this. I think it's something they need to kind of work out. Did you say the, the public input was kind of different than what the zoning board thought? I think those things need to be worked out. I think what Drew's saying is. Find the right criteria so that we fit the whole thing. I mean.
But there's no magic matrix out there to tell us what size building is gonna be appropriate.
That's one of the issues, though, isn't it?
Yeah, that's where that then to. You wanna allow for grow operation. Uh, and his pro site is on a county road. So you could put two ten thousand for the building that. But the way that was proposed last night, you would have to have. The other ten thousand square foot building on a separate lot.
Hmm, okay.
So, which doesn't make any sense to me either.
Yeah.
What's the difference if they're separated by a hundred feet or connected?
Yeah. And we could prohibit uses that, that we want to promote, like, for instance, the. Uh, freedom to repair sort of stuff can. Goes through so you could, uh, have someone work on your. Combine, for instance, you know, we having an ag repair shop. Probably wouldn't fit very well in the ten, ten K building, I assume.
No, I, I mean, those are the ones we were discussing last night that aren't very big anymore. Let's see, yeah, because we have a couple of those in the county.
Right.
And private shops are ten thousand square. Yeah. I mean, so therefore, like, ag use, they. True, but it's still, I mean, it was the size of the building that was giving people work.
Right.
Chair, I was through last night and I just want to ask that. I really appreciate the detail and going into the difference between the building sizes, but like, excluding something. Want there, I want to make a point that. The concern of building size or the concern with zoning changes seem to. At least my perception seem to come down to. How do we align ourselves with comprehensive plan that respects, um, the beauty of the place? And natural resources and protection and there seem to be some, some feedback or fallback from the zoning mission. We can't define that and I argue that we can or we have to, or we have to at least look that the comprehensive plan. Includes that, therefore, we gotta figure out how to. Put that in a metric, you know, make that so that is measurable or make that so that it is open for. Feedback from the community saying, you know, we don't think this fits with the natural resources. So I, I just wanted to kind of point that out, that that spelt to me like the tenor of the backboard. It wasn't so much the size, it was the impact.
So, can I ask a question? So is what you were suggesting that, uh, there should be. Conditional use permit. So that there's a. You know, there's a hearing before a, uh. I, I don't feel like I'm in a position to speak for, for many people who are here. Um, I will say that I do appreciate conditional use permanent opportunities for the public to.
So joint jurisdiction, issue discussion. Who wants to start? Why are you doing yourself first, Joe, you know?
Um, yeah, I guess if you'll allow me to talk. Um. I'll try and summarize this as much as I can. Uh, but, uh, the, the events that have happened to I and my business over the last, uh. Two months, two weeks, um, it's, it's hard not to. Maybe get too involved with this. Uh, but to give you a little bit of background so that you know who we are. Uh, my father started in agribusiness in Vermillion, I think back in nineteen sixty-nine. Um, fertilizer, chemical seed, uh, and all that. Um, I grew up working there, but I got a degree in accounting, came back in ninety-two and bought our first grain elevator. Uh, S and H during which had been abandoned for about three years, about five hundred thousand bushels. I'm the manager of that. In ninety-six, we bought two portions of farmer's elevator. Uh, they had been out of business for about two years. Uh, that bumped us up to about nine hundred thousand bushels. And then in two thousand and three, we bought the facility on the west end of town. And that's mainly what I need to talk about if it's okay. Um, and the history of that facility. Um, I think in sixty-seven, it was started by Terminal Grain. Uh, as a grain elevator, primarily a feed mill, if I'm not mistaken. Uh. In nineties, about ninety-four, it was purchased by Cargill. In two thousand and three, they closed it. Uh, it was owned by a couple of local truckers at Allen and Edmondale for about three months and then we took it over. Uh, mid-two thousand and three. Um, in nineteen eighty-seven, Terminal Grain applied for rezoning. On that property that was coordinating with, with when they put in railroad tracks and the rail loadout system and everything like that. And at that time, it was changed from agricultural to industrial. And, um. Purchased it in two thousand and three. Um. The way I describe it is Cargill kind of, uh. Got it, the facility and walked away. And when we purchased it, we rebuilt the track. Well, they had taken out the rail loadout system, they'd taken out all heat equipment. They had collapsed a couple of grain bins. Uh, they had gotten the capacity down to about two hundred and sixty thousand. When we purchased it, we rebuilt the railroad track. We re-ensel, built up a new rail loadout system, brought in a second dryer. Reconstructed a couple of grain bins, put in a million bushel flat storage building. A one twenty by five hundred. And part of why I mention all of that is because when we purchased it in two thousand and three, we obviously had to check what zone. We had a multitude of, uh, building permits that we had to do to get all this work done, so we, we know what the zone. And that was industrial. And the way I describe it, um, this property, as you come down the hill on Cherry Street. Um, we own from the bottom of the bluff, which is the Vermillion city limits to the Vermillion River. And then from the railroad tracks or Highway fifty all the way to the Highway fifty bypass. Approximately, I think we're assessed at forty-five acres. Approximately, when we purchased it, lower southern, two-thirds of it was industrial. And the upper one-third was agricultural. Uh, now the railroad tracks extended into that agricultural. It wasn't a big deal because at that time. Uh, both industrial and agricultural allowed for agribusiness, grain elevators, railroad rideaway. All the different things like that, so. All billing permits were issued, we went forward, everything was great. Uh, we continued, uh, from two thousand and three until present day, operating as a grain elevator. Doing some rail transloading, between truck and rail, um, regular agribusiness, uh, everything like that, pretty much businesses normal. We did experience a couple of rough years, uh, everybody around here can remember eighteen and nineteen, uh, we were very wet. A lot of acres in Clay County didn't get planted. What did get planted was maybe soybeans instead of corn. So put that in perspective, instead of getting two hundred to two hundred and forty bushel acre, we got fifty. Uh, so our, our bush, our quantities were less than half. Why I bring this up? Well, in third year was the COVID year. Uh, all the, all the ethanol plants in the area closed down for about two to three months. About a third for about six months and about a fourth haven't reopened. So a little bit of a rocky time for the grain elevator business, so. During that two years, we were looking very hard for some other opportunities. What could we do with our facility? Now, all of our grain currently gets, uh. Rail or trucked out rather, either bean sorting processing plans or ethanol plants. Uh, we have an asset in our rail down, we have just under a mile of track breaks off into three spurs. Now, like I said, about forty-three acres, we have a sixty thousand square foot building, we can store grain in, but we can do many things. We were pursuing those opportunities. A couple of months ago, I came to Drew, uh, not as well aware of what our zoning was, I wanted to make sure that, uh. There was someone that wanted at least maybe one spur of our track, just kind of some light. Manufacturing, uh, some fabricating. Um, wanted to make sure that would fall under our zoning. I talked to Zoo, uh, to Drew and he said, uh. No, you can't do anything like that. Uh, when I look you up on the map, you are zoned agricultural. And I'm like, that can't be right, I mean, we. Went through that whole process that I explained before. And he's like, no, you're, you're zoned agricultural. And actually, when I look at what's allowed under agricultural. Grain elevator is not allowed. Looked it up and the only thing that allows for a grain elevator in the joint jurisdiction. Uh, parameters is heavy industrial. And that is what the conditional use permit. Uh, obviously, I was a little floored. Um, it took me, this was two months ago, it took us. At least a month and a half of digging, trying to find out how did my zoning get changed? We couldn't figure it out. I was able to find the documentation where it had been zoned to industrial, terminal grain. You know, they went through all the steps you're supposed to. Finally, we, uh, pushed the city, uh, to provide us to see what they had and their records. And after a couple of weeks of kind of. Badgering, um, they finally provided us semblance of answer. Uh. During the, uh, restructuring of the joint jurisdiction agreement in two thousand and twelve. Apparently, my property down, uh. On the west end of town was all changed. Uh, zoning was changed from industrial to agricultural. Uh, this was told to me by the city engineer and the city manager. Um, they said this was approved by all three zoning committees, city council and county commissioners. Uh, again, I'm, I'm shocked. And I said, well, I was never notified. He said, well, in certain instances, the city, uh, joint zoning changes, the city does not need to notify the property. And this is one of them. On broad sweeping zoning changes, we don't have to notify. But technically, we did notify you by notice of paper. Uh, I, I have a copy of that notice if anybody would like to see it. Basically, it's just saying that we're going over the ordinances for the joint jurisdiction. Uh, agreement, says nothing about zoning changes, says. Nothing like that. I pushed a little farther, uh. I, I wanna know when this happened. I wanna know how it happened and I wanna know why it happened. Been able to determine roughly when it happened. Uh, I cannot get an answer as to why it happened and I cannot get a, uh. An answer as to who initiated this change. I spoke with members of all three planning commissions at that time, a couple of members of the city council, members of the. Uh, county commissioners at that time, uh, there was an additional committee. Uh, that was formed, the combination of city and county representatives, I've spoken to a few of them. Not a single person, uh, has any recollection of my property being referenced. Um. Uh, there's an infamous map that developed out of this whole process. Uh, that now I'm being told, this is how my zone got changed. The zoning was changed on the map, map was submitted with all the other information. Um, you know, the changes in ordinances, boundaries, so on and so forth, and that was all approved by all the various entities and so therefore yours of course changed. I, I fluctuated back and forth between being absolutely furious over this situation, just absolutely being flabbergasted. Uh, I. Uh, we can pursue this with litigation, uh, I'm told, but yeah, I, my, my goal is not to fight the city that I. Born and raised and had business in for how many years, but I just, I cannot believe this happened. I can't believe that. Consider acceptable. Uh, and, uh, I, I guess from, from, from my standpoint, we have two things that, that I want to deal with. One, I gotta figure out, I gotta go through the whole resoning process. I gotta pay to hit every zone, uh, I gotta go through five, five different ends. All three zoning commissions, city council and county commissioners. It's gonna probably take me somewhere to the tune of two and three months to get through that. Notices, scheduling meetings, so on and so forth. That time could possibly be doubled because an additional, I'm asking this and asking for zoning, I have to ask for the conditional, uh, permit. And go through the whole process, yeah. Again. Furious, shocked, whatever, you know, I, I'm gonna try and deal with that situation, but this brings up another point to me. Um. I cannot believe that a property owner, in particular, business owner in Vermillion or Clay County, can have the zoning changed on them without their authorization. I want that changed. I absolutely want that changed. I do not believe that situation should exist. I also feel as somebody that owns property in this joint jurisdiction. Territory. Um, that I'm experiencing, we're experiencing a lot of double jeopardy. We're jumping through twice as many hoops as anybody else, either in the city or outside that jurisdiction or county. For anything that we want to do. And honestly, I don't feel that's fair. I look at some of the, uh, the, uh, hoops that some of the other businesses, particularly agribusiness, nutrient had to go through. Uh, over this last year. Uh, and I'll tell you what, somebody, somebody that's been trying to pursue other business opportunities, we've been talking to companies about possibly selling a, uh. Buying us, we, we probably have twelve different prospects. We've been talking to companies about possibly selling a uh, a minus. We we probably have twelve different prospects. Someone have wanted to buy, some have wanted to lease a portion or lease to buy. Some have wanted to partner with us and some other kind of sidelines, utilize track, land, the million bushel building, you know, that we built. Uh, and I'll guarantee you, the people from the outside looking in, looking at situations that are going on in this county. And they're walking away. What's what's happened to Nutrient? This whole situation kind of explained some things to us. We could not figure out why during the summer, there were some businesses that we were talking to. Buying us or leasing uh, parts of our track and things like that. Also, the conversations just stopped. No longer talking to us, won't return our phone calls. Few of these are leads that the BBC brought to us. Can't understand why they quit talking to us. Now, I'm pretty sure they went on that county zoning map, looked at uh, at our zoning and said, well. He doesn't know what he's talking about. He can't do any of these things here and they're just done. And let me tell you, it's hard enough to bring, I've been trying for two years. I've been working with the BBC. Uh, actually, I've been working for. Ten years to do other things uh, with my facility down there. And I'll tell you what, it's it's hard, it's hard enough. But when you have these kind of hoops to jump through, it makes it ten times harder. And I guarantee you, businesses outside looking in. I look into what's happening. Right now, I have two serious business prospects, one this week and one the beginning of next week. They either will sit down and talk to me about purchasing my facility or leasing and coming into a partnership. I gotta sit down with them, tell them, and. The zoning isn't gonna work, maybe for another two to six months. And I'll tell you what, we already feel like, in retrospect, now, looking back at the situation, we've been getting affected financially. You're teed, we're gonna get affected financially in the next two months. And one of these opportunities, so once in a lifetime opportunity for play out. And for agribusiness, I confidential agreements, I can't go into the details. I have talked to some of the members of the uh, BBC about it. They're able to, I can't, I wanna public here and talk about some of this stuff, but I'll tell you what, uh, I said, it's a once in a lifetime. Uh, opportunity, and this is jeopardy. And this, we we've been in agribusiness for five decades here in Vermont and Clay County. And I tell you what, um, I don't like this situation that we're in right now. I do not like this current joint jurisdiction agreement. I think it's unfair. I think it's very slanted uh, towards the city. Um, the input that I'm getting from people, um, it seems like there's very little discussion. It seems like buck stops. Uh, with their decision. And that's at 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 a minimum, it ought to be fifty-one county, forty-nine percent city. Because guess what? We're talking about property that's in. And as somebody that, I I don't know if uh, at least in the grain industry, if anybody's invested more time and more money. In Clay County and trying to have a grain elevator than us. I'll tell you what, it's damn hard. And we're to the point, when something like this pops up, we kind of go, why are we still trying? So, in our personal situation, we're trying to move forward, trying to design back. Uh, to the way that it should be, trying to get those business opportunities that we've been working for two years on, uh, back. Uh, I tell you what, going forward, I want to change. I I I I. Is it, as a business owner, somebody that has invested in Clay County, right, I demand a change. This needs to be looked at. At least we've got revalued or discussed, uh, i- if not just dropped. He says, I understand that the laws changed in two thousand and twelve. County is no longer obligated. Uh, to 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 do jurisdiction. I hope I'm not speaking here, but. Some of the the information I was looking at, the reason this whole new joint jurisdiction came up. It's because of the state laws change. I want this analyzed. I want this looked at. I want to again, go back to the point of, I don't feel like any property owner or business owner. Uh, should have the zoning changed on on without permission. I don't care if some secretary has to stuff envelopes for a month. Notify every property owner. I think we have that right. And whatever we gotta do to get that changed, I will fully be behind and I will help you apart. But I we gotta have those changes. And and like I said, it hits home because it's 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 affecting us financially. And then so, again, I I apologize for taking so long to get through that, but I wanted to kind of. Understand our path and that we are so frustrated right now at this point. Anybody have any questions for me about that situation or?
It's my question is, I got, I talked to the institute, so I have a little insight here, but. I got taken by the last night, you know. Does it have to go through, and maybe I'm wrong here, does that go through the record because? Wouldn't that change something there? I mean, if he went from agriculture to light industry, I'm assuming. It's what they had, or they just have industry?
Heavy industrial. We we were, we're, it was originally put in as heavy industrial. At some point, it got changed. To light industrial. Now, I I I'm not so sure that maybe when this first occurred, they didn't have those separate categories. That's not a hundred percent sure, but I want to talk, I talked to Spike some time with Baker Stoffers. He was the manager of terminal grain. He was basically the one that spearheaded that whole change. Uh, he told me that it was heavy industrial and all the way to the road tracks. He goes that they want to make sure they were covered. And and there was a lot of discussion in fact, he said there was even some property given to some of the landowners. I think the block property, just to to peas and 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 make everything. So that's what he told me. Uh, and 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 I have some some charts that were in our old information that listed as heavy industrial. Now, I believe at the time when it changed, it was light industrial, but um. In the joint jurisdiction categories, heavy industrial right now is the only category that allows. For grain elevator, grain processing, anything like that, uh, and it's unconditional use. Now, the county's zoning, if I'm not mistaken, light industrial covers that. And then I don't know that it that it is conditional use. I know, so. Right there is your difference between the county and this joint jurisdiction. Uh.
Yeah, I don't know if it would have been changed at the assessor's office. I don't know if she would have been notified.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, but wouldn't it would change your tax?
Our our taxes went up that year.
I'm gonna go quick and ask you.
We have this case listed.
Is that that parcel not what's saved, but what category it's all that's.
Commercial. It didn't change on our property taxes from the one year to the.
Is it? So, so you've been paying industrial taxes?
I think it says commercial ag.
Commercial.
Now, nothing I'm told is really what was labeled on our on our actual state. It doesn't really mean a whole lot. You know, I know that I can show you some maps. Another part of a part of the property, the acres that we're getting, we're getting assessed on is that technically the Vermillion River. The the block goes across all the way to the other side of the river and that's what we're getting assessed on. Not something we really complained about or, I mean. To us, that's not the issue. Just the issues of our zoning got changed without us being notified and nobody, nobody can tell us. How or why. Honestly.
But apparently, the zoning change uh, happened. During the drafting of the new. And so, we don't know really whether the the change in that zoning was as a result. Of maybe a clerical error in drawing, drawing the lines.
Honestly, my two opinions of thoughts on this right now are either gross, gross incompetence. And a and a map was grabbed that the chain was on or, you know, that maybe shouldn't have been. Or somebody changed the map and then purposely didn't bring it up. Because I cannot find a single committee, a single person in all these committees, a special committee, anything that that remembers discussing my property.
I understand. I I, you know, I think one of the basic things would be leaning on to determine. Whether this was a an error at that time or something that was intentional would be. Whether the tax status of that property was changed at the time that map was drafted. And why would it be changed without deep process?
So, I'm just gonna give you the answer you don't want.
Zoning ha- really doesn't have anything to do with ours. If you have a motel. That's in a residential area, it's still gonna be a commercial property. We, there's only three different levels. There's A, there's non-A and owner occupied. So that's what we go by. That doesn't have anything to do with how it's zoned. I mean, you could have. Like downtown, there's living areas. I mean, in a commercial zone, so, and there's A. You have to meet certain qualifications for it to be considered A. Two acres can be A. If it meets certain requirements.
So that doesn't help us.
No.
Define it. But getting back to your point, if this was just an error, it was just an error in oversight. Kevin wouldn't be here today because we'd we'd be in the process of fixing.
Right, right.
But he's getting held up to sit.
Right.
And there, you know, I believe they told you, we can put it on the agenda, but it's probably not what it is.
I I was encouraged against requesting a rezoning. That what they told me was, maybe you should, maybe you should, you should go ahead and request permission to continue to operate as as you are. Technically, I'm allowed to do that by a grandfather clause. But I'm not happy with that. That that doesn't satisfy my E P. You think that my bank is gonna be happy with that? Uh, or anything like that? Uh, L P C that has to issue me a grain dealer's license. You think they're gonna be accept that? No. Uh, so you, I I either need to be, if if this, you know, here's a, here's another part of what bothers. Um, at one time, agricultural zoning allowed, grain elevators, agribusiness, railroad, you know, all that got changed. I'm the only damn grain elevator in this county. How come this wasn't discussed with me? Or in a community this size, how come nobody came to me and said, hey, we're talking about changing your zoning? And not a whole lot of advantages doing business in a small community, one of them should be that that you at least washed out for. I mean, on a personal note, that really upsets me. But so all the agricultural things that applied to my business were changed. And when it was dropped into a different zoning, all of a sudden now it's a conditional use. I mean, you almost get the sense that maybe somebody doesn't want a grain elevator here in Clay County. Because I'm starting to feel like that. I mean, I hate to sound so dramatic or drastic. But man, how can you sit in my seat and not feel like somebody's kind of stepping the deck against you? Uh, and now, now I gotta go through the whole rezoning. Yeah, do I feel that's fair? No, I'm screaming, hey, this was an error. This was, you know, if I want to go through this litigation, yeah, I'm gonna sue my own city. Um, but that's gonna take me a year. I need to get this resolved as quickly as I can. Um. But again, part of why, part of why I'm part of this discussion, this needs to get looked at. This isn't working. And I'm just not, just not my situation, but I tell you what, my situation is having an impact on us financially. And I tell you what, it's affecting the future of Vermont and Clay County right now. I can tell you that straight out. Uh, and based on my events, the next two weeks, it could dramatically affect it. So I'm telling you, it's it's having an effect, but I can, I can point out a dozen other businesses or people. In this joint jurisdiction area that are not happy and and feel picked on. And uh, don't feel like they've been treated fairly. I don't feel like that was the way the feeling was before this jurisdiction agreement. You know, uh, again, why are the zoning categories of the county so much different than the ones from the joint jurisdiction? This needs to be looked at. And that's what, that's what I'm requesting. Again, sorry it took so long to go through all that, but. This is a big deal to us.
But right now, you're to the point where you could grandfather instill the analogy.
However, yeah, I can continue to operate as a great grandparent, but again, however, you can't do anything else. The whims of who am I subject to?
Well, can you sell it? Does the grandfather go away after you sell it?
Um, yeah, I've been given, I've been given two or three different timelines. At first, it was, oh, you, as long as you're operating uh, as a grain elevator for two years and then I was a year and a half, now I'm here being called a year. Um. Now, we, we, we couldn't deliver grain for about three to four months during the year of COVID. Right there, we're just gonna, where we technically operating as a grain elevator? And whose definition are we operating as a grain elevator? I mean, I've been in the green just thirty years.
Sure.
Who's gonna tell me whether I'm operating as a grain elevator? Why, why does somebody else have that right? I I just, I think this is just wrong. And again, the fact that I'm, yeah, it was pulled over and over by the city.
Yeah.
You don't need to worry about this. Your grandfather did. No, that's not acceptable in any degree. Again, I don't think that's acceptable to my bank. You know, so they're gonna continue to give me an opera, ten million dollar operating loan so that I, and I don't even know if I can function. On the property and I'll guarantee it, nobody, nobody, I mean, we, we had two co-ops that came. That were gonna come look at our facility this summer and they both dropped the business. And I'll just about guarantee it has to do with this zoning or else they were looking at the nutrient situation. I'm just being honest, you know, but uh, who, and if. Been here for five decades. If I can't get a rezoning change back to the way that this needs to be or what I request. Why the hell would anybody from the outside think they could come? That's reality, I mean. So, but. How this situation even happened? Tell me, that's not something other people are gonna look at.
The biggest problem I see here is, I'd like to resolve your problem right now. The problem you got right now. I'm not sure how to do it, to be honest with you. I mean. Let alone something in the future, you know, like new business coming in. I agree, we need to fix that for the future, but.
Here's, here's, here's uh, here's irony.
I don't know how to resolve this quick.
No, I don't either.
I think Drew got a.
I don't know how to resolve.
Kick out of this, okay? Here's, here's the, here's the notice in the paper that they say changed my zoning. Right now, here's a stack of documents and paper that I'm going through to try and get this changed back. And Drew goes, well, one of the first steps we're gonna do is put a notice in the paper, notify all the adjoining neighbors, so on and so forth, you know, the whole process. I'm like, this was mine, this was mine. Uh, so he says, my obligation to have looked at this and interpreted. That this was gonna, could change the zoning of my property and I should have been there at that meeting. And I say, no. I said, come on, that is not reality. That's not, and I, that's not the way I want my county or my city. I guess that's the message I'm trying to send. I know, I know. I know that ninety-nine percent of the people out there in this this county believe. That their zoning is going to be changed, that they would be notified first. I know that. There's not a single person I told about this situation that didn't, there wasn't immediately outraged. Travis, I had to call him. They can't do that. Yeah, they have to notify you. Reaching to the choir, I said, I know, it's the same reaction I had. But that, guess what? That's not the reality. And and so this, in my mind, this 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 needs to be changed. And I'll tell you what, if it doesn't, I'm not sure. My my dad is absolutely disgusted with this. He is in disbelief. He can't hardly talk to anybody about it because he gets so mad. But I, if this situation doesn't change, that's, that's gonna change our views on whether we want to continue to operate here again. Or continue. I don't want to fire yourself and just shut down that elevator, but hell, if I can't change the zoning, I'm not sure what other opportunity to have. We've made some investment down there. So. Yeah, I apologize if he takes you on. Any other questions about that?
Okay, what do they have a zone as now?
Agricultural, A one.
Across the river, that's light industrial.
Yeah.
That bottom row.
Yeah.
That don't make any sense.
But. It almost feels like there was an error.
It almost feels like there was an error during the time that, that the zoning map was, was created. And especially within that line, that across the river would be light industrial. It's almost as if there was an error committed in that. Occurred, not committed in a certain.
But the same people who may be committed to the error.
Yeah.
Are still on those boards and still calling the shots and are, are really not willing to work to fix the error. So is it an oversight? Or was it intentional?
Yeah, and I'm sure the clause is, this is the main thing that is amended as well.
Here's another issue that bothers me. Exactly one year after my zone changes when Bliss Point, Bliss Point Development was introduced. Some people, that doesn't seem like a big deal. Some people go, uh huh. Cause here's a housing development that overlooks part of my business. Somebody wants to put up a nice big fancy house there and go, well, what about this business? Or you don't need to worry about that. That's agricultural, they can't. They can't do anything more down there.
Well, as a owner of property in joint jurisdiction, you know, my, my own perception is is that the present system really promotes what we, what I call target, target development. Instead, it's within the city limits. It's fairly easy to develop because there's only one entity to work with. In the joint jurisdiction, it's very difficult to develop. Uh, because there's multiple entities involved. And outside of joint jurisdiction, it's easy. So you end up with de facto zoning or development, economic development. That is shaped like a target. It's got, uh, easy, surrounded by tougher, surrounded by easier development possible.
And I can understand, I can appreciate to a degree. Why maybe there's, there's a little bit more scrutiny because you are, you know, you have residential homes and, and I mean. We have a grain elevator in the south and a town that basically town is growing around and we, times have some issues, but we're trying to be good neighbors. I mean, uh, I don't believe anybody on that level would complain about us being there versus what Carville is there. Because their mode of operation was big smelly, rotting piles of grain out of the ground. We made the investment for a million bush plant storage instead. We don't dump grain on the ground. Try and be good neighbors. I don't believe, I'm not aware of any complaints, uh, with us down there on that end of town. So on one hand, maybe we're, we're, should be subject to a little more scrutiny because we're close to residential. But on the other hand, yeah, I hate to keep saying that, but we've been in the business, agriculture for five decades. I'm not aware of any major complaints, spills, we've never had any, I mean, things that are, the synergy industries are prone to. Damn it, we've proven that we can operate and operate well in this county. Don't, doesn't, don't we deserve something for that? I mean, we don't deserve to be going through this, I can guarantee. I don't deserve probably tomorrow in a business meeting, having to sit down with somebody that potentially wants to purchase my facility and say. Uh, sorry, uh, we might have to hold off on this for six months. I don't deserve that. But yeah, I. Why is it easier to do something within the city limits than it is for me being a block outside of? Does not seem fair.
Wish I had an answer.
I do too. Like I said, I, I'm gonna try and steer this quickest path. Uh, that I can, but, uh, you know, another thing I, I've asked. Uh, cause I, I did, I did ask to, to speak in front of the county planning commission. Uh, and then Jay Bottleson was on that committee, uh, now and at that time. Uh, there's another gentleman that happened to be in. Public part, they were both, um, on the committees at that time. Were, we were not wearing anything like this there. I think they were, oh, got right upset, you know. Uh, over the situation. Uh, I tried to bring this in front of the city. Planning committee, joint county, county, joint planning only meets for specific purposes, so they don't meet regularly. I wanted to speak to the city planning commission on this, they would not allow me to go on that agenda. The city engineer, because he said that is not county business, that is. Or a city business that is county business or joint jurisdiction. I said, I just wanted to speak to him. I said, if I'm gonna eventually need to talk about this, I said, I'd like to talk about this whole issue. That upsets. I try and be as nice about this as I can and I'm trying to offer, okay, let's resolve this as quickly. Smoothly as we can. And as long as we do that, I'm just gonna try and get through it and move on. Uh, what, what I have kind of told them is if I start resisting this on this, I'm gonna get mad and I'm gonna cause some problems. And that's it. And there are going to be some changes. I can overall say from the city county end, the response has been very positive. I'm not, on the city end. Well, I said, can't talk to, can't talk to their committees, can't. So there's, there's definitely difference, definitely a ton. I'd like my property that resides in the county to go back to the decision making. Yeah. I don't, did you wanna try and do the reason or? Well, there's, there's a bunch of hoops I gotta jump through. We have to get notice, uh. In the paper, a certain amount of time, we have to file neighbors, I said, there's a number of steps that we have to go through. Drew knows all the steps is.
You're not a minimum six weeks out.
Believe the average time, anticipated time was two to three months. And that's if we don't have to do a conditional permit now. I requested, Drew said, we, we oftentimes can put those together. Same discussion. Uh, I proposed that to, uh, the county or joint jurisdiction and. City engineer preferred not to do that. First he said no, then I talked to Don Forst, who was in charge of the city planning. And he said, well, I have no problem with it. So. As of right now, I think we can do both at both times. Initially their answer on that was no, you need to go through.
That's a problem also. I mean, you said terminals built in sixty-seven. So business that's been there for over fifty years, now he's gotta ask permission. And then they can put conditions on how you're operating now. That is crap. There is no way.
Well, okay, if I, if I reset this as a grain elevator, um, I mean. It's a conditional permit. Yeah, they wanna change anything at all. Somebody might invest in that to be a grain elevator and they may say, oh, we don't like you being. Uh, operating that grain elevator. We're not gonna, we're not gonna allow this. Again, who, who would buy into that situation? I wouldn't. We didn't. When we bought the elevator, we knew exactly how the zoning was and we knew what we were allowed to do and not allowed to do. And, and I guess, hell, I'd like to think, I mean, we, we could have invested the money in a million dollars worth of grain bins for storage. But I can anticipate changes in, you know, economic, you know, whatever. So we build a building that can store grain in, but could have other uses. Right now, a part of why I'm getting attention down there is again, the combination of the rail and what all can be done with that bill. Whether it's just warehousing or a central hub, you know, loading cars, rail, you know. A lot of opportunities. That's why we invested the way that we did. Now, is somebody gonna step in and tell me, oh, you're not operating this grain elevator? Well, that bothers me too, you know. Shouldn't I have some adaptability and, and being able to utilize what assets I have down there? Again, like I said, it's not like we're bad neighbors. It's not like we're gonna, I mean, try and upset, we live in this community, have our entire lives, you know. Come on.
I, I'll kind of be the devil's advocate here, but, um. Just from the standpoint of problems, I can say from the hazardous materials side, the all of that. Not one issue down there. The only thing that was a problem was the train that derailed right over your driveway five years ago. But there has been a lot of issues throughout this joint jurisdiction and I'm just gonna throw this out there. If the county would. End that agreement with. Free up a lot of this hassle. You, in general or for good? In, well, probably both. It would take, hopefully he can go through the reason quicker.
Okay.
Because it will take a little bit of time to get out of the agreement. But for future uses, yeah, it would, it would solve a lot of problems. Okay, uh, again, kind of devil's advocate, everybody's trying to hint around that is a possible solution, so I'll throw it out there. But again, from my standpoint, emergency management, hazardous materials, there's never been an issue down there. I don't understand how this happened. Cause actually I showed it to Drew and I'm sure that's on mapping error. Also, if you look at this on pictometry. And go to the joint jurisdiction later. It covers everything except this part. That is not included in that layer. So again, if there's a mapping issue going on, it seems to be revolving around this piece of property.
So that particular property, the whole forty acres is excluded from the overlay that's mapped to joint jurisdiction.
The last time I looked at it is, uh, which was the day, what, last month I spoke to Greg.
On the calendar.
On pict, on, on. Right. But how they get their border lines and all that, I don't know.
I think that can be looked at. But those map layers, how they're manipulated over time, no.
So you think it was an error or was this deep cut here?
On pictometry, possibly.
Are there any over minutes?
Yeah, I've poured through every minute from approximately mid two thousand eleven till about the end of, uh, March. Two thousand twelve. I've got memos, uh. Planning committee admits, uh, joint, like I said, any, any, yes, I cannot find one reference to my facility. Not find anything in block.
So the change is not necessarily recorded, uh, supported by the record?
Cause there is more.
The stance of the city engineer and the city manager was, the change was made on the map, everyone approved the map therefore. The zoning change, the zoning was changed and it was done legally. They do not see. Any room for error. Another thing that I had brought up was in some of those earlier memos, uh, reference to a city. I don't know if I'm gonna use the right term. Future use kind of map. And in, in every reference, in those first three or four references, memos, minutes, it was specifically stated, this is not to be used as a joint jurisdiction map. Specifically stated. And so I questioned, I said, it looks to me, cause we go along and go along, it keeps getting referenced, this is not to be used, this is not to be used. And then all of a sudden we flip and we have a map. So it looks to me like that map. Nope, that's not the case. Okay, so it's where did this map come from? Who determined this map? Who discussed this map? Can I get that answer? And the only, I don't mean, I don't wanna beat a dead horse on that, but I knew I gotta go in front of all five of these zoning committees, city council. You guys, and somebody at some point's gonna say, well, there must have been a reason why. I can't get that answer. So I've been trying to pursue it. Nobody can give me that answer. Now, I said, frustrated with this, two points. One, that happened. Two, how come I can't get as quick a resolution on this as what the change in zoning happened? Can, can the county commissioners request the zone change? Why not? Would that, would that give me less resistance going through all these other entities? You guys request it? I don't, why do I have to pay? Uh, to request a zone change? Cause that business, operating as that business already went through all this. Elegate property away. You know what? I don't feel like I should need to do something like that. I think with proof next to.
What about that?
Do we initiate a rezoning?
Man, I think you guys can go through a process and initiate that. I think you guys can go through that and initiate a process in that regard and go through that process. I think there, this is a multi-layered onion and I want to visit with you all. I was very trying to talk about that executive session regarding central radiation.
Yeah, I was like, we talked yesterday, you know, I was on the city planning one day, as you told me, I couldn't remember that. But I definitely wasn't. But see, I don't remember anything ever coming up that specifically. You know, said this to the territory. I don't remember any of that.
Right.
And I think when you talked to Don, he told you the same thing.
And here's two questions I asked every person I talked to and every one of these committees, you know. Five or nine, actually six organizations. One, do you remember my property being discussed specifically? Do you remember my property, do you remember zoning about that? Nobody could. I said, no, there's this map that's been thrown out there and they say, how, I said. Do you remember the map? They kind of do, but more so, okay, these are the new boundaries kind of thing. I said, were you aware or was it discussed at all that that map entailed any zoning changes? And I don't wanna put words in people's mouth, but the overwhelming response was no. We weren't aware of that. I think everybody believed that was a snapshot of what was existing right then. And that's what we're moving forward. And if, and with all the ordinances listed, okay, you gotta go through this process and this process, this process to result. That's the impression that I got from everyone. Now, there's still a number of people that I have, I, I can't get a contact. Few people that passed away. But I talked to everybody that I could. That seems to be the sense. Those two questions, I asked every one of those people, those two questions I asked you, you know, and that's the response I got.
So I was on the county planning at the time. I don't remember. I don't remember, um. Jerry Bottleson's the gentleman who's talking about, there's no way. Cause he was commissioner at the time, he, he was very instrumental in writing. He doesn't remember any song.
I, I remember it was more focused coming south. Change, not, it was very careful not to make a change. Was that a nice little distraction from the other side?
I don't know. And facilities out on like highway fifty, new U, everything else, they were zoned commercial business. To like two thousand six, they're zoned. So. Yeah, so, and one of the things the city said to me, you know, everything she had, that map was not.
Phil, she probably should direct your mic to. I'm taking your uh, I'm taking your job.
Um I do remember discussions about the southern portion of the joint jurisdiction. And there was quite a bit of conversation on that to make sure there wasn't changes in zoning. Now, I'm questioning, was that a distraction from the other side?
And I do remember that, being on the city one too, where we talked about that. I don't remember the zoning part, but I do remember the changes, the, the borders, I guess, is what I'd say. And I remember with all that down there around that Burbank area, or not Burbank, basically, that, yeah, kind of down there, Ponderosa and that area there. Or so then it was ever, I don't remember anything to them, but. Or work for that. So I, I guess, what, 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 I guess we need to figure out what we can, we can do here.
Yes.
I, I agree with those, do we get the both of the joint together or what? We need to figure out what we do, we need to resolve, and I don't know how quickly we can go with Kevin, but, but we need to solve period future. You know, just because he's got a business down there that's got agriculture now, maybe he's gonna get something else related to agriculture to sell. Or if somebody else buys it as a grain owner and say, hey, we only wanna use half of it, or we're gonna use the other part for, I don't know, sell tire, like place up in Beer Street, where they got this tire warehouse, you know? I mean, those things are things that better, that are good industries for the community, employ people, and that's what we're asking. You know, it helps everybody.
You know, adding a rail spur like that too, is really, it's quite a community asset. It's good for the whole community to have that spur to keep it up. So let's, let's initiate this own change.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. You wanna back the heavy industrial, Kevin, please?
I think, well, with the current joint jurisdiction situation, it's the only one that allows it. So we'll go then.
And it's, and there's still the conditional use from that.
Should we, should we bring this back up next meeting, uh to uh give us a little bit of a chance to let Drew and Lexi do a little bit of work on it, and then, and bring it up at that time?
That's fine. Cause we're gonna have to approve what they put out.
Yeah.
You, you don't wanna have something that's conditioned this way? You want something that's preferable that way it's done?
Right, I mean, no, I, I, I don't like the current zoning situation, you know, I wanna, I would prefer to go back to the way it was, or to be the counties. Uh zoning.
Well, I get the way that if you zone it different, and you still gotta have a conditional use, there's still a lot of hoops you gotta jump through. I believe you want to sort it so that you can do it as a permitted thing, but it's not, but we don't have a permitted use for an elevator. The grain elevator only can sit in a heavy industrial area, which has a conditional use attached to it. We can't make something, you know. I know what you, I would love to do that too. I'd love to wave at the CUP right now. But you can do it outside the jurisdiction. Or in the city, wave it. No, you still, no, I, I can have a grain elevator without a conditional use outside. Or in the city.
Or in the city.
Yeah, it's heavy.
Well, I, I, I take that back. I don't know. I'm not aware, I'm not aware of us having to have a conditional use for the existing grain elevator. But again, that was done back in ninety-two and ninety-six. I probably better check to make sure that the zoning didn't get pulled out from under feet and the city looked too. I don't believe that has been.
I can say I would vote, or I would testify on your behalf. If you had a half one, you have to be a Sierra person, and have somebody tend to be the ones that protect the, the, you know, environment. I know that space, and I know what we could do, and this is extremely wrong, and so you would have a Sierra pub ever on your side.
Well, to be quite honest, being in the fertilizer chemical, I, I mean, I don't think there's anybody that, that, that has to be more aware of, or more conscious of what we're doing with chemicals and things like that. And my doubt is nationally recognized for setting a standard in containment and so forth, and like that, and, and, I mean, it just cause that's our industry, that's our business, we're gonna be more, and we are since the fact that we are next to the river, you know, I mean, that's our business, we know it, we know how to be safe, you know. But yeah, I, I, I'm not happy with current zone. But that's, that's the only way I know to address this right now.
So we initiate the zone change in the CUP the same, same day?
That would be my, yeah, cause, cause in, in my mind, it's the same discussion. Right? I mean, you're talking about our business being there, you know, whether she's on for that, and then whether our business should be allowed, I mean, I think it's the same discussion. That's what I tried to pitch to the city. Cause the engineer didn't agree with me, but the chair got forced.
It's still a process, and it's gonna take some time, but at least we can get the process started, I guess.
And we're not charging him to do it.
No.
And, and I guess the other thing, I, 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 another thing I'm worried about, okay, am I gonna go through this in a couple more years? We're rewriting new comprehensive plan, uh and all this. I, 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 I can't get a straight answer in what instances this mass zoning change can happen. Am I gonna go through this again in a couple of years? Am I gonna have to look at every notice in the paper? Cause the official told us my obligation to look at this and realize which ones are gonna change my zone. I, I, I have a copy of each of that, if you, if you'd like to see it, you tell me whether this should have told my zone was gonna get changed. This is it all. I'm sorry, but. So again, that, that, that alludes to a bigger picture. I, I wanna do what I can to get this fixed, and I appreciate that you wanna try and help me fix this, cause I, I really do appreciate that. Got a bigger issue too. How did this happen? And why does it seem okay that it happened? Yeah.
Anybody have anything else? Till next meeting?
Till next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys. Really, really appreciate it.
If you don't have. Thank you so much.
Okay, motion's a payroll. Everybody see those? Move to approve. Motion a second, in further discussion. During, uh all those papers say hi.
Hi.
All the same sign, motion passes. Iron Grove Road Project, uh there's a township meeting in this room tonight at seven. I'm going to be there, I just wanted. I'm sure I know where everybody's at, we kind of discussed it, but I'm sure that if they go through with the project, we're okay with it. That's my understanding. I just want that clear. So, uh, home room sound system. Let me see that.
I didn't think that we need for the. I mean.
I think, I think that's what they need. Um, they did just install a TV, need to help with the ITV system, so then I think the last step is the sound system.
So that come out of our.
The, the sound system or the TV?
Sounds.
Sorry, um, yes.
Okay, I read your. I like the way you're taking it. It's like the best idea to me.
I just, what was that?
Was she voted to deal with, we have been. Go ahead, law library. Take money out of law library. Fund to fund a lot of things that happened, buying books and.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do that, no?
So we can take this on the building.
We can, yes.
Okay. I'll move to, do we need a motion here? I'll move to approve it.
On second.
A motion of a second, you put a discussion. Bring them, all those favors say hi.
Hi.
All the same sign, motion passes. Software conversion contract proposal, transcendent technologies.
If my question again is, this is what you guys need, I mean, I'm not an expert on it at all.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I guess the, you know, it sounds like they're willing to support, continue to support your software for a period of time.
Yes, Patty is, I talked to Patty, and this contract has nothing to do with our office, what you're signing. And Patty has, has told me that she will support her system for us at least until twenty twenty-five. Which, and the state isn't even ready to, to do our portion of it, which is kind of backwards, because we're the ones where all the numbers come from. But. So, and then in, in that time, we can, if they are not going to do a program, which I'm we could, we have time to look at another program for us. So, but there is, Patty is going to have to write some conversion, not a conversion, some reprogramming to meet the new state requirements. But that will also be a cost share with her other five counties, because none of the director's offices are ready to go with them. Because a proposal didn't include us anyways, so.
So Carrie, on this one, under auditor functions, under exhibit A, the assessment management, import update from Vanguard, C A N A. And entry essentially assess values, is that something you need to be, or is that maybe be struck?
That needs to be struck, I think, right, Lex? So that was my only observation after I knew some other things, and they modified and made some other changes, gave some explanations to the things, talking to these guys that everybody's comfortable with, uh what we've got going on. Uh but then also touching base with Aina, since she doesn't use Vanguard, I mean, that just doesn't seem to be applicable to things, because there isn't gonna be the import and update from Vanguard. Um so that's not what we're using. So my thought would be if you want to approve this, to just authorize approval with striking that sentence. And Travis initially in dating that, um, you know, in an ideal world, the company, when they sign, is gonna initially date that too, but I did mention, I mean, if they're signing subsequent to us, they should see that, and since they did, um, and signed it, hopefully they'll find that application. I mean, all it does is just note that. I mean, I suppose if you left it in this regard, it's, they're willing to offer that as a service, but it's just not applicable to us, because we aren't using Vanguard, and that's the concern is to identify that they know that that's not what we're using. And then entry essentially assessed values, I just don't know if that piggybacked off of Vanguard, I hadn't really contemplated that, I assume that was stuff.
That's just something Carrie adds, but that's an auditor function.
So we want to keep that, so it would then just be authorizing, um, approval of the contract subject to striking that import update from Vanguard, C A M A. Unless there's any chance that you would think we might go to that, but then we can also modify, adopt that as a, as an update or addendum to the contract in the future, ask them if they would do that, but. Um but I think that as it stands right now, it's not being utilized, and you just wanna make sure that they know that that's not. And that's been communicated to them, so that's not applicable for us.
And then you're, you're satisfied with the other, um, amendments that they made with these last two questions?
Yeah, I mean, they took out some things that, that should be taken out, and I was happy about that. Um, you know, they added in a cap on some of the pricing that it could go up for years, so I thought that was a good thing, I mean, five percent is still, I get greedy, I don't wanna see. But, but the fact of the matter is, is it doesn't sound to me like there are really many other options right now, and if these guys are happy with this, and, and that cap is a good thing. Then we at least know what our total exposure is for year, for ten years, and this will automatically be renewed yearly thereafter if we don't get notice. So, I mean, that, that was a good thing. Um, it looks good to me, from, from any concerns of a standpoint in that regard, and, um, and that, these guys are, they're the end users, and they're happy to pass that.
The, the cap, uh, applied to the present contract, that if there were additional modules added, we may have some extra costs, it's the cost there. There's really nothing we expect to have as far as additional modules at this point.
Well, there definitely a new contract, I'm sure, when they add us.
Sure.
And that's what I would say, I think that it was just anticipated this structure, what we would be looking at or doing or thinking about is that if somebody's gonna design something for Aina thereafter, that's just gonna be a separate. Probably, if I contemplate that, in my mind, then maybe in that subsequent agreement, that's how we tie together the other two, right? This is gonna feed in and tie with the agreement that's already in place, the software system that's already in place, if you're creating a new platform, Aina's comfortable with it, and it helps that, however that works out, that's a part of that next contract for her office.
Okay. And at some point, I'll probably be able to, on this too, to manage all files I have. Everything's really well set. All right now, but, right now.
Good, having it so it's easy to integrate, is a big.
Minus, minus.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is the board?
I move to approve.
I second, with the striking of, yes, Vanguard. Motion of a second, any further discussion? Here you go, all those favors, they're right.
Right.
All the same sign, motion passes. Grant policy draft. I don't know if this will be to see it.
I sent that out, I think.
The grant, grant policy.
September, um, just gave everybody time to look at it. I don't care if any changes from anyone.
We can, we can adopt it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we pretty much read it to our exhaust. Move to the.
Motion of a second, any further discussion? Hearing them, all those favors say hi.
Hi.
All the same sign, passes.
Um, I don't think it had a signature on the back, I'll double check that. Um, but otherwise, I think it's just, it's a matter of that, it's our policy.
Okay. Joint jurisdiction discussion. Been a very serious discussion about joint jurisdiction. There's a lot of problems. There's no given.
I don't see why it should be such a sticky issue. I'm sure it has become one. And like I said earlier, with someone that owns property in joint jurisdiction, you know, we out there that own property, you know, almost feel like there's, uh, anything we wanna do, there's a lot of hoops to stick, jump through, and it's, it's one of the unintended consequences of having a joint jurisdiction that is governed by five different bodies, essentially. We really have to jump through hoops from five different sources, Devin pointed out, and it does end up being a real break on any change or new development within that area. And as I said earlier, it turns out to be sort of target development, target, target shaped development, you end up with, uh, new development or changes for the better or for the worse, I guess. Being discouraged more within that circle than it is either outside or inside of joint jurisdiction. And nobody intends that, it's just a fact of life. And it's because of this extra set of hoops that have to be jumped through. I accepted that when I bought this property and then I did go through the the when I asked for a change in. In zoning and then getting a building permits and all that sort of good stuff. You know, all that has to go through both both entities also, but. I I guess what I'm saying is I'm living some of those issues that we're talking about in problems.
Or maybe I'm wrong here, but it always seems to be like. The county has one rules for that and the city has one rule for that, that there's no joint rules for it.
There is.
But there is, but they they both contribute to it.
Yeah.
And that's where the problem comes in, am I right? Because it sure the heck seems like it.
Well, and when we've been having these discussions, trying to get new rules written. The language I've always rung in there was, these are the rules for joint jurisdiction, nothing else comes into play.
Correct.
The city want to agree. They want to have their comprehensive plan. They want to be able to apply that to the joint jurisdiction regardless. Well, that's not going to work, it has its own comprehensive plan and its own set of zone. Don't don't the city and the county both have to agree on their joint zoning or there can't be a joint zoning? Well, if any change now, yeah, because I believe I would have written down, here's a sketch, says the city and the county can't agree. On their plans, there will be no joint jurisdiction, you can walk away from it. I believe the county control the ceiling. We can get out. And then whatever's the city limits is theirs and everything else is the county's, right? Would be no no joint at all. It's the city limits and wherever happens outside the city limits is the county's. Not a hundred percent.
Yeah. There's a few things.
But you have a lot more tea in that decision making. Well, yeah, I mean, the city had us plotting three miles. If we were to get out.
And a subdivision.
And a subdivision orders, but those things will all be in writing and are going to be spelled out. There'll be no interpretation. Because we've run into that before where something wanted to happen in the joint jurisdiction. Person wanted to build another home on the property, couldn't. It was allowed if you were an egg producer. The city tried to get it in, they asked if you had a part, because they would consider that a farm. I'm like, no, we're not gonna, if we don't like it, fix it. So we fixed it, I mean, it was quick because everybody thought it was needed to be done, but. I've just seen. Seen too many things where it's been the rules that we're okay with it. And we've been on the other way if we don't like it.
Is there anything you have in joint jurisdiction that needs to be affected? I haven't seen anything from them.
I don't know, I mean, it is the largest or the largest thing contentious thing that we have to deal with. It's it's always the.
Is this the way there's other counties too? Do they have joint jurisdiction?
Other counties have joint jurisdiction agreements, only Brooklyn's that are structured where it's the city that you're.
Okay.
Brooklyn just a unique deal, just they go habitate. But no other.
So so how do the other ones organize it?
One old like miniaha, the county has, I won't say, the cities there is a main by.
And it's been a county, the city of Hartford, I believe, trying to get into a joint jurisdiction agreement with them. And they said, no, we're not doing it anymore. That was just a year or two ago.
What's that made them get?
They've got extra territorial jurisdictions. I can't remember.
It's not very far, it's maybe only half mile around the outside.
Half mile or miles, yeah.
So all those businesses that are on East Highway fifty, they they're burned by the county. Where's the answer, it's the. It's the bank road.
They're they're.
Might have moved out, I used to jump.
Oh, yeah, they're jagged, yeah.
Yeah, but the longest time it was built back. So the meaning is it was east of that was county. But yours was a bit east of there.
It's worked so well in Brookings, you know, you don't end up with a lot of the issues. We have, I have a friend that has a company that he put out in on the side of the, one of the early ones on the side of the interstate. Cheech P Systems and things were pretty seamless for him when he built that twenty-five years ago.
I hope so.
But they wouldn't have.
Brookings is very different.
Yeah, but they wouldn't have joint jurisdiction.
Probably, probably that was the deal, was that he was dealing strictly with county. I don't know that for sure.
Because I believe when we got in or started talking about it, the state allowed it.
I see.
That's my understanding.
And Brookings has had, last forty years, they doubled in size.
Yeah.
They had businesses coming in.
Which is that they're fifty fifty?
No, yeah, as far as I understand.
Yeah, Chris, I guess it would have been probably in nineteen ninety-nine. Or thereabouts when Chris, so it had been about nineteen ninety-nine or so, Chris built his building out there. And nice big splash job and supply yard, so it's a. Sort of a light industrial setting. But.
And at that time, he wouldn't have been surrounded by much of it.
Correct, he was pretty much, he was pretty much one of the first ones out there, yeah. But it it is a an issue, you you can see by looking at the Brooklyn situation. This idea of having kind of a development desert essentially in the joint jurisdiction has not occurred there. But I. At least the perception to me is is that we we have that sort of admission here.
You know, and they brought up their biggest issue was the the future street plan. Why not deal with that, we can use that.
Yeah.
Just so it fits when the time comes, but. There is, they will give enough. I mean, they felt like they gave something because they came and asked to go all the way to becoming land in east. And I forget how far, three miles more than three miles. I mean, the joint jurisdiction area right now encompasses twenty-three square miles. And they wanted to go to more.
Add another five or six to that.
Was one of that.
I don't think you can, can you? I mean, it's in like three miles.
You can go six miles.
You can go six, huh, it was sort of a three.
Planning is three, say if we were to get out, they would have planning authority, three miles around, plus a subdivision ordinance. But since we may have come back to the original line, we want it to shrink because we think there's still not too much area. They're not moving above anything. You give them one thing and they ask for another.
I don't think they want to get up either.
Well, they came back to the original one, joint jurisdiction area, that's the reason they felt that they meant a lot.
It sounds like a toddler. One thing that does happen too elsewhere like in Brookings is the when there is a plan to build out somewhat. The city does put up some money, you know, get utilities out there. If it's something they're going to end up moving into, they build out the base utilities, like having a sewer, water. And not necessarily curbing better, but they do support future expansion to that extent. That's not been my experience, at least in rebellion. Usually what they do is say, well, you want to, you want to put a new company in outside of the city limits. Well, you go ahead and do that and you pay for the, you pay for those those expansion services before we will provide them.
And those services, those are, their requirements are higher than now.
Yeah, very expensive.
Even the current height is a lot of, than what the city requires, so. And it's concrete roads or most places you can do basketball roads, there's everything that you can do to make it more expensive and difficult. It's there and it's not negotiable at all. Yeah, Donovan's when he tried to do this subdivision out there. I don't know how soon you walk out of that room, I mean, I was just pretty quick.
That's the biggest problem, we're we're pushing businesses somewhere else.
Yeah, all the time. Yeah, we're discouraging economic development essentially.
I mean, Steve Donovan would have finished building the whole thing if he wouldn't have had to deal with the city, the joint jurisdiction area. So you go right up to it. We're limiting half of that property then, by not by not being developed. I mean, there's there's businesses that we don't hear about. That the general public doesn't hear about.
I've got six businesses right now, wanting to come into the county, as soon as we get some of these order. And not, and single one of them. The interest, you know, at all, or joint or joint, yeah, any. Far away as possible.
Sounds like what we're just talking about here is our alternative is to get out and agree.
I guess I'd add one more thing than that, is that that's one of the reasons why I need electric, that's exactly where it's at.
It's right outside, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, I think it's a hundred feet outside of joint jurisdiction.
Pretty sure that's why we moved this far more up here.
I, that was.
Hundred percent, I won't, I won't talk on.
Yeah, we have that situation. Yeah.
There's reasons there.
Why Bill O'Connor built that far east.
Correct.
Clayton.
That's my, yeah.
He said, I didn't. But I think there is interest in building that in that area of joint jurisdiction, certainly, they're just not going to jump through those hoops.
There's advantages to that, being able to build simply and and easily within that area. There's parcels that are great for certain, certain types of construction, but. I know, I know that having been involved in a couple of decisions like that, yeah, it's. It's better to be either outside or inside the city. The economic benefits that accrue to either one, depending on your specific building situation.
You know, if we if we happen to get out, I would still want to use their street. Because it's it only makes sense.
Sure.
And we would be required of them.
Is there a need?
Okay.
Yeah.
That would remain under the, under this situation.
I wasn't sure, but I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Because I know, I mean, we've all driven in plenty of towns, who designed this? We've got the ability to have straight streets right now.
Certainly got info building that.
Well. We can solve that. I know with dealing with it, and I've been on the planning zone since two thousand and eleven, I'm more ready to get out.
I certainly have not heard any positive of what I learned.
I don't think there is any positive. Because we we get, we have all the negative impacts, the people aren't happy. And the people who live in the joint jurisdiction don't have any recourse, they they can't remove, they can't, by voting, they can't remove anybody on the city's side. You know, they don't like the decisions of it. So they're stuck with whatever the city is deciding. And in the first place, they moved out into the country, they thought, to get away from that. But they didn't go far enough.
So they're still under the influence without any representation.
Correct.
Then I guess keyword, there is not any, any.
Well, that's why I I explained that to the city, you know, one of those meetings we have, just tell it. Because they didn't quite understand, I'm like, well, as commissioner of the county, the city gets to vote if I want to be here. Now, people living in the joint jurisdiction area don't get to vote on the city council. They're they're stuck with who's over there and they're making decisions for people. That don't live in the city. And the biggest problem is it's fifty fifty and if one says no, let's.
And that's part of what I say, Andy, is that each entity has veto power. All takes us one entity or the other to vote to deny. And so essentially those in the joint jurisdiction, because they don't have a voice in that. Whether that's a denial or not on the city side, they really have no representation.
And getting out is not an overnight event. Carrie, can we put this?
Yeah, definitely. And what are, what are the unintended consequences we should consider? What what are those that may be out there? You know, because we know one of the room knows what they are now, but it could be that. Drew and Lexi might be able to run out of some for us. People don't load any anymore on you guys, but but I think it's a pretty important issue.
A big one, I think I want to add at that time, but what goes into a comprehensive, what's allowed under South Dakota law? For that or the subdivision. What's allowing that, because that is something they're allowed. Whether the city can be still restrained by that, I don't know.
Yeah.
But finding out what that.
I know it's a separate, separate section of statute and I've looked at it, but it's been long enough to build it.
So when there are subdivision rules, do they they get to dictate roads on the bills?
If the roads possibly are construction. Rightways.
Yeah, they'll have rightways and everything, I just didn't know. Dictate concrete, I don't think, I'll tell her.
And I think so.
Which they do not, I mean, so. We're not giving up anything.
Well, we don't have a subdivision ordinance for joint jurisdiction. The city has assumed that their current city subdivision. So wait up there, yes.
Which, I mean, we've operated that way because county didn't have one and we were just going to lose our city. So how it would work if we did get out was the by resolution. And then I think with the timing of the year. It would be an end date of April first, this time, for Drew to redo all the documents. To put that joint jurisdiction to what the county would be. To make sure things encompassed in there and not be, would be ready to go for the next.
There would be some negotiations still. There'd be a fight afterwards. Cause particularly that planning authority, subdivision ordinance inspections. And, uh, 911 address, but I think you probably leave that one aside. But those, those three, they would have to be negotiated out. But we can still move forward on it unimpeded, I think at that point.
Anything else for that?
Alexis, do you want to weigh in on this? I want to weigh in on potential litigation.
What was the three again? You said roads, subdivision?
Planning, subdivision, planning inspections.
What inspections do they do now?
On, uh, building permits, joint jurisdiction.
No, they do not.
And what I mean, I think they're looking for is they want to go out and make sure people stay non-setbacks. Cause it's usually when you've already footed or something, that's when it's not covered.
They're checking electrical and plumbing. They're checking bill on bills.
You're the technical. I don't think they check.
They do.
But I did mine, uh, the state inspector did both, uh, plumbing and electric.
They, from what I know, the city will have to sign off the electrical side for occupancy or else. To make sure that it hasn't been inspected in the meets cities.
I had it when it's like a house, so they have stated.
Yeah.
So I haven't had that. But the problem with, with rebellion is, is they change rules. Where I live is you were supposed to, you built a shed in your backyard or whatever. It's supposed to, it was supposed to look like your house. And it can only be so big. Well, I built mine that looks like my house. You go to houses to the north of me and that certainly doesn't look like their house. It ain't even close. So when they come out and inspect my building, I said, what's going on here? That house? Cause he said, he said, well, that was all right. I said, no, that was built back. And that's not all right. It put, you were, you could put electrical in it, but you weren't supposed to be able to put, uh, water or something. They got water. So, I mean, just depends on if they want to look good or not. And that's what really rips me about the run. They've always done that. It isn't the first and it's, that's one of my biggest peaks. I mean, I followed the rules of the covenant. You did what it said, but obviously I didn't have to.
Well, you would have to.
What?
You had to.
I chose to.
That's based on who you are, not what you do. It's wrong.
I would say just for what's right from an open, this part is an executive session worthy. And Drew has a very good grasp handle advice to you guys on what those powers are going to be for the city, what they are for the county. And so what, what any trade off is and what he's talked to you guys about. And so I think those are just things to be aware of going forward is you make your choice and what you want to do, what you're giving up, which is what you're getting and how those things interact. So I think he's, I mean, he and I have talked about that recently. I feel a lot better about having this discussion today than when we, we first had some conversations about this. There was, there was some conceptual, how, how would this work? What would we do? And I think we all have a better understanding of where we go from that, um, today.
I think Kevin brought it to the point. When he was there, that, I mean, when he called me yesterday, I was, really? This doesn't make any sense to me at all.
No.
Yeah, absolutely didn't say.
Okay, we're into executive session. Unless anybody has anything else.
Did you guys have something?
Well, they're going to be part of it, maybe with contractual and then we have litigation.
Or potential litigation, sure, yeah.
So we, let's, those two things we're going to the different session. Or contractual and litigation purposes.
Yes.
Second, motion to the second. Close, we're in executive session.